Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Westford School Committee for Monday, May 6th. We will start, this meeting is being recorded and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able to join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to have so many young voices in the room. And to have so many people here while we're doing that, it's normally just us.
Every month. It's really great to have a full house. We're going to start with our consent agenda. There is meeting minutes in the packet as well as two warrants, payroll and expense warrants. There's also a, do you want to speak to the Valley Collaborative or is that when your updates?
I can talk about it in the update as well. That's just the annual appointment that every single year you have to vote to appoint me to be a member of their Board of Directors.
Okay. And there's a out-of-state field trip request for this June from the WA Grade 10 class trip.
It's out of state going up to Old Orchard Beach.
But single day, not overnight, yep. Any questions on that?
No.
There's also, just to speak to, there's an part of the work on the student activities accounts policy, there's been an update to the guidelines that is being worked out with Town Hall for the WA debit card. So there's a copy of that as well for the public in the packet. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Nope. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
It's all moved.
Catherine, a second.
Second.
Mari, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Next up is public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in-person at the microphone in the room.
Hi guys, my name is Meg and I'm a senior in Westford Academy High School. I'm on a track team for Unified, Unified Track Team. And I'm really happy for that. And I want to thank you all, the teachers out there that helps me and my friends support Unified Track. And also thank you for Unified Sports too. Thank you for that.
Do you want to do your last one?
And I want to say thank you for, for the teachers out there, like Mr. Murray and other teachers out there. Thank you for doing that, for our class and yeah, I want to say thank you.
And your last sentence?
And I'm the first family member to be in the track team.
Nice.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Thank you for participating. I mean, there's no point in having a team if we don't have people to participate, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you running Falmouth again? Did you run Falmouth last year?
I think so. I think so.
Did you sign up to run the Falmouth Road Race again?
Well, I did sign up again, yes.
Good job. I've run that one too. It's not easy.
It's not easy. It takes practice.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, you can do it and you can bring your son for it if you want to, if you want to do it too.
Good job.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for the tip, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Healy Norton. I just wanted to make a brief public comment. I too am thrilled to have Unified Sports here in Westford. It's made a huge difference for Meg. I also wanted to thank my friend Chris Sanders for his commitment to school committee through truly unprecedented times. And wherever I ran into Chris, whether it was at Panera or in a parking lot, no matter the weather, he was always willing to engage and, and listen. And he's been very supportive of activities at the day school. And I just would like to thank you for your service to the community on behalf of myself and all of our community members.
Aww.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Any other public comment in the room?
Nothing here.
And none online? Well, that was, that makes a great segue then into our next item on the agenda, which is school committee retiree recognition. So I'll, I'll do a reminder on the election a little bit later, but obviously with an Election Day comes the end of terms. So Ming Chen finishing up year six and Chris Sanders finishing up year nine and Catherine running for reelection of, after year three. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Chu.
Thank you. So you've both been on the committee for a while, so you know that when someone is choosing to leave us, that we like to recognize them as well. So we do have a gift for both of you to thank you for your service. I might need to make sure that, yeah, okay.
You'll figure it out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I will say it's been an honor to work with both of you.
Thank you.
I've appreciated getting to know you over the years. I appreciate the fact that I, I knew you as a building principal as well too. And so I just think that, you know, the work that you've done, the work that all of you are doing as volunteers is often, people don't necessarily always appreciate it. And, and I do appreciate the work that you've both done and I wish you great success and I know you will be logging in to watch all of the meetings in the future.
Maybe on YouTube, maybe not Zoom, like YouTube.
YouTube, yeah.
I can pause, I can, I can do double speed.
But, you know, your Monday evenings.
There must be another committee somewhere you need, you can stick them on.
But in all seriousness, thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, obviously Ming Chen and I have worked together for many years on Finance Subcommittee and I've appreciated your viewpoints there. And I can't say enough about how much I learned as we were Chair and Vice Chair for two whole years. Felt like the great, a great mentorship into stepping into Chair. And you will be missed.
Thank you.
Any other, open it up for, on the spot?
I mean, I, I'll just say I'm, like, I, I have mixed feelings, you know, like it's bittersweet, but I'm proud of the work the district has done, that we've done as a committee. I know there are challenges ahead, but I'm really, I feel really good about the leadership that we have in the district on this committee. I know it's a caring and very competent and capable group and so I know good things are coming down the road, continue to come down the road. And I'm just, you know, I'm grateful to the students and the families and the voters for letting me represent them and to work on their behalf. I'm grateful to the staff for what you do every single day for our students. And yeah, it's been a real honor and be kind to each other, Westford. Go vote tomorrow and good things, good things in the future.
Well said, Chris. I'll say like, in addition to that, one other thing which like a lot of previous committee members probably doesn't have the chance to experience is like, we went through the COVID years, we also went through with a new superintendent, so those are the two things like, a lot of people served on the committee for many years, they, they don't have that experience.
Nice timing, Ming Chen.
I don't think it was our fault that COVID came.
I think they double count, right? Some of those years really count as like two.
Yeah, twister pension.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to informational updates now with the superintendent.
Piggybacking on that appreciation, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I, I think our, our PTOs and the students do a phenomenal job supporting our teachers. Our teachers do incredible work all year round and I know that they appreciate being appreciated this week and different events kind of take place at different grade levels and, and different schools. And I know one of the schools even did it last week to kind of break up that sort of pressure on the parents who are supporting multiple schools, which I thought was a really smart thing for the PTO to, to think about. So we, we wish all of our, all of our teachers, you know, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week and just want to keep that on everybody's, everybody's radar. This Thursday night, the Districtwide Art Show will be taking place at Westford Academy from five to seven. If you haven't been in the past, it's phenomenal. They fill up the lobbies, all of the multiple lobbies and there's events going on in the PAC and there's performances taking place in different, in different areas and I would encourage you to attend. There is a, I think a $1 suggested donation for admission, but it's a, it's a great event if you haven't been and I would, I would encourage you to see that. In that same line, Danya Usmani, who you've seen some of her work, her work was in the art club calendar this year. It was actually also selected to be a part of the Middlesex Superior Court Youth Art Program. And so that means that they're actually going to professionally frame this picture and it will be hanging in the courthouse. And they're going to have a celebration and a ceremony with all of the different artists to celebrate that. And if it's the, her picture, the picture that was selected is the one that she, where she was inspired by Norman Rockwell and has a picture of one of our local police officers in Muffins on Main and she's the child saluting the, the officer, if you, if you remember that picture, that's the one that was selected. So we congratulate Danya for that. We have a lot of good news tonight. So The Ghost Rider attended the New England Scholastic Press Association's Annual Conference on Friday and their publication was recognized with an All-New England Award, which is given out to the best publications in New England. So we're not surprised as we actually look to The Ghost Rider for most trusted news. Additionally, the following reporters were recognized for some of their individual work. So James Farley for one of his sports stories, Shrivis Arun for a review, Alitza Kaliva for her bylined column, Deepa Gaudam for her feature story, Sanvi Aurora for another feature story and Kate Kelly also for a feature story. So those individual reporters were recognized and so we just want to congratulate them. And as I say anything about WA, I start to get nervous that I'm stealing your thunder. So I'm like, wait, did that came to me and I wanted to make sure we shared. On my May 1st update to families, I sent out the invitation for people to fill out a participation interest for the Equity Audit. I'm happy to say that we have 33 people who've already filled that out and I want to encourage people, if you didn't see that, again, that was in the update that I sent out on May 1st. And so it's a Google survey that's just asking if people are interested in participating and then it does ask some background questions. The AIR, which is the Equity Audit Organization that we're working with, they're looking to put together like a, a wide cross-section of participants. So they'll select based on the information that people are sharing to participate in some of these focus groups. Additionally, we will be surveying all of our staff as well to collect data for that. And then as was mentioned in the consent agenda, the annually you, you need to vote to appoint me or the superintendent to be on the Board of Directors for Valley Collaborative, which is our public collaborative special education program that, that we are members of. One of the things that they have asked of us is that we share their quarterly newsletter and their quarterly financial reports with you. So while it's not a specific agenda item for you, because it's not something that you would vote on, it's something that, it's, it's, it's something that, that, that the school is taking care of, they want to make sure that they're sharing all of that information for transparency. And they will be going through a very specific new process, auditing process with the Department of Education, that they've actually volunteered to be the first collaborative to go through this process because they were working with the department and, and helping to establish what these, what the criteria should be. And, and so that, one of the things was making sure that, that we are sharing this information. So I, so they shared that with me, so I put it in the packet and I'll speak to it when it comes up quarterly in my update so that we know that you have access to it and you can always certainly review it and if you have any questions, reach out to me. And then the other thing that I wanted to address in the update tonight was some follow-up information about the information that I shared Friday night about the DBUS driver who had been arrested. So one of the things that I wanted to, to share with folks, a little bit more information than we shared on Friday night, was just that the individual who wa, who was arrested had previously been driving one of our Westford Academy afternoon routes. The other routes that this driver did was, was for DBUS, but it was different schools, different districts in the morning and stuff like that. And so people had asked me, you know, who, what route was this and, and being concerned if their, their children had been interacted with this individual. We also, I didn't have the information, I was relatively confident on Friday night, but I didn't have the information to clearly say that no students from Westford were involved in this. And while we remain concerned for the children and families who have been impacted, I have confirmed with our, with Westford Police Department that there weren't any students in Westford that, that were involved. I've reviewed the, the background procedures and, and all of the different process that DBUS utilized when they're hiring people. And I thought it would be good to kind of share that with you because it's, it's relatively extensive and some people ask those questions too about Corey checks and things like that. And so the, I, first of all, each of the, in order to become a bus driver first, a candidate needs to get four different permits, one for Class B, then a CDL, then a passenger permit and then finally a school bus certification permit. So they, they have to get those permits just so they can begin the training process. There's 60 hours of training that they go through. They have to do an extensive physical in order to get a Department of Transportation medical card that says that they are fit to do this work. All of that has to take place before then they get their Corey, which is the criminal offense record check. And that happens through the RMV. So the RMV as the licensing agent will then do the Corey check on drivers. And then they actually have their license, they go through the exam with the RMV. Then in order to become an employee, they're fingerprinted, which is a process that we do with all of our, our staff as well. DBUS does that as well too, so they, so people get fingerprinted, which for people who aren't aware, the Corey process will give us information about previous arrests and charges within the state of Massachusetts. The fingerprinting, which is something we'd started a number of years ago, gives us access to other state information. So if something happened in another state, we would now get that information. Just, not everybody might be aware of that. They do a pre-employment drug and alcohol screening and then that information is also held in a clearinghouse now. That is a relatively new process where they'll hold on to that information so that if somebody had failed another screening with a different employer or something like that, that whoever the hiring employer would have access to that information. And so they have to do all of that before they are able to transport students. And then on an annual basis, they have to get a Corey through the RMV. They have to do that Department of Transportation physical in order to maintain their medical card. And then they do additional, just safety trainings with DBUS. So that's one of the things that, that I reviewed with them, talking through all of their process and I, I just kind of wanted to remind everybody that we continue to communicate to DBUS our expectations that their hiring and training processes or processes prioritize the wellbeing and, and safety of all of our students. So I kind of just wanted to share all that with the committee because that wasn't all of the information that we had shared in that, if, if there were any questions.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Any questions on that?
Will that, will that be going out, more of that information be going out in another, through another medium?
I can. I had talked about potentially doing that. I really wanted to share that information with all of you. And if that's something that the committee felt would be helpful, then I, I can, I can have that prepared to send out and share with families.
I think it might, just with the, you know, other news reporting and stuff that we're seeing at the moment. Maybe it's an opportunity to just clarify that too.
Okay. I can do that, I can do that tomorrow unless there's concerns, if anybody thinks, well, yeah, I will plan to do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Depending on how late this meeting goes.
Cut me off.
I have a follow-up question, I have a couple of questions. So my first question is, a lot of the training that you talked about is safety training, which obviously is one of the important things because the kids are riding in the bus. And, and I understand that this individual was interacting with other towns and so we feel like the interactions were limited to the afternoon bus route. Are we considering having Guidance say something to students about being able to come forward to Guidance if they have any concerns or if they, if they have any feelings that they would have to like to share with Guidance? Like just putting out a message that's saying that, you know, we're listening.
Yeah. I think we could, I think we can do that at this moment in time. We hadn't, other than I think people expressing concern based on the information that they received, and I know, I know our schools are prepared to, to listen and to addressing those questions, proactively, I don't think we have said anything to the students if they, if they had information that they wanted to, to talk about, but we could do that.
Did you say you had more?
That's, I'm fine.
Okay. And I should have said this when you started, but if you, the microphone, that's okay.
I wasn't too close, okay.
That's okay, just for the next time.
I usually project pretty good. Anyway.
Sean.
Yeah. Chris, can you touch on like how frequently current employees would be reviewed for this type of stuff? So you mentioned fingerprints, Corey's. Is this happening on a yearly basis, like, because I guess the concern might be if a candidate's not flagged and then gets into trouble in another state, how would D or the district come to find out about that if it wasn't reported by the department or something?
Right. We, they don't do the fingerprinting annually, but they do the Corey process annually, so within the state of Massachusetts. I do think we are reliant on our partners in law enforcement to be proactive in sharing information with us as well too. But in terms of, we, we don't actually go through a process of having to re-fingerprint people at this time, but the Corey's are done regularly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I, I guess that might be a concern of mine, right? Because as you pointed out, Corey covers Massachusetts, fingerprinting presuming that the reporting department puts it in the fingerprint database, which is held by the feds, right? So there's information there that theoretically Corey wouldn't pick up, so, I mean, if there is kind of like an ask or something outside of this, maybe that's worth exploring a little more with D as to, you know, is this something that should be happening on a bi-annual or an annual basis? I don't know.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I know many in the community are concerned and I appreciate the updated information. We'll go to student representatives.
I wouldn't worry about like taking my thunder anyway about WA, there's always a lot that's happening.
There is.
There's a lot that's happening at the end of the year, even though the year's winding down. So today AP exams started, I believe it was the AP Chem exam, so maybe we'll get another student who scores a perfect score. But exam, AP exams start, they go on for this week and next week. Alongside that, on the 11th or this Saturday, juniors have their cotillion, so they're going to Kimball's, so hopefully they have fun there. And last Friday, Sasa hosted their Holy Celebration in the student parking lot and passing by was the Lowell Sun. I think he had gone to the baseball game or one of the sports games and as he walked by, he had seen kind of what was going on and he was like, what's this? And so he managed to take pictures of that, so.
Awesome.
There was that. I think that's, those were the main things that happened. DECA kids, about, we sent about 50 kids to ICDC this year, which was in Anaheim, and about, we had three students place in like their top of their categories.
Wow, that's amazing. Thanks. And I skipped school committee, so a lot of school committee updates. Just one bit of information, I don't know if people have seen it, it's about the Apple Blossom Parade. On May 18th, and the Commission on Disability have worked with the parade organizers, there's now going to be a section of the parade that's a reduced noise level. So for any families who have kiddos who are sensitive to the sirens or the muskets or the big symbols, it'll be just kind of outside the Muffins on Main area of the parade route. And so it will be a reduced noise level. So you can still cheer and clap, but there won't be any sirens or loud noises at that part.
Thank you.
Finance Subcommittee met last week. This time of the year, we kind of wind down, so it's a good time to look over some of our schools' student activity funds, the revenues that come in, the expenses that go out. Jenny Lynn was very helpful in providing that to us. We've also begun a review of other school district policies regarding model policies for reserve funds. So we're going to incorporate that into our practices and really solidify that, so.
And as part of that, one thing that we talked about in Finance Subcommittee, if you have that slide.
Sorry.
For anyone listening, I think it's good to repeat from our finance meeting is an update from town meeting. So if you aren't, weren't aware, town meeting was held on April 27th. The Article 1, which was the increased budget, did pass. Thank you. So that ties into Election Day tomorrow and if ballot question one is approved, that avoids that, the reductions that we've been talking about since, since December, that's about 50.4 instructional staff. Article 2 at town meeting did not pass, that needed the two-thirds vote. So that would have, Articles 2 and 3 remember covered funding for FY '26 and beyond. That is still represented, represented in ballot question 2 on tomorrow's Election Day and that is still open to residents to vote on. Article 4 is where I've been getting a couple of questions from. So Article 4 from town meeting was the no override budget, so it's about $2.5 million lower than our school budget in Article 1. That was approved with a, an amendment of $387,000. So just to clarify, at which we did at the time, but town meeting does not have the authority to direct how that funding gets, gets allocated, right? Town meeting just approves a line item for the school budget. Those decisions are what we're here for. And at the time, it didn't feel right to deliberate on that without, you know, a camera and all, seven of us on microphones and everything like that. So it also, to me, I would propose that we wait until after the election, until our next budget, but business meeting, instead of dealing with hypotheticals about whether, how tomorrow's results go. And just a reminder for anybody wondering about what the, the impact of that amendment is and any misinformation, we, we don't know what the source of that $387,000 is yet. It could be one-time use funds. And it does not mitigate all of the impacts that we have talked about, that would be in the 50, the reduction of 50.4 instructional staff, so the impacts to the high school, the electives, the APs, the middle school interventionists, the middle school reading teachers. There are still other impacts to the elementary schools with, I think, four classroom teachers and three literacy specialists. I hope I'm not forgetting anything. And also all the, the impacts to the town department. So even though there was an amendment added on to that budget line item in Article 4, it does not negate the request of the override. I hope that's clear for everybody.
And I know you say it's one-time funds, but this, this extra amendment is only for one year, that amount. It doesn't carry.
Correct. We, we just don't know where that comes from yet.
Yeah. But it's one-time.
Any other comments there? Okay, great. I just wanted to take that opportunity, clear that up for anybody watching. And then I'll end with a reminder for Election Day tomorrow, polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Your polling location, if you haven't been lately in a couple of years, has been consolidated to just WA and Stony Brook. There's a really handy website on the state to check your voter registration, whereduivote ma.com, all one word. So please hope to see you cast your vote, vote tomorrow. Okay, we will move on to our first order of business, which is the day schools, day school, school. Okay, we will move on to our first order of business, which is the day school, day school, school senate presentation. If you want to join us up at the front, please. And we'll get your slides on the screen.
Eventually, I don't know what my thing is.
Do you want to start by introducing yourselves?
Yeah, thank you for having us here. I'm Kirtan and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Abigail and I'm in third grade.
I'm Michelle and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Willow and I'm in fifth grade.
Great, thank you. Very happy to see you. We're just waiting for your slides to get up. Feel free to start whenever.
So this survey was created by all students and editors at the day school.
Sorry, let's come through on a different.
Our school has a diverse population with 36% of students who identify as Asian and others who identify as African-American and Hispanic. We're the cu, we're the customers of our, of our school cafeteria. Most food-related businesses rely on reviews to make changes. We want to make sure our voice is heard about the food options in the cafeteria.
How did we connect this survey? Two hundred seventy-nine day school students participated in this survey. We asked questions using scales like the following. How satisfied are you with the school lunch choices? One to, one or two being not very satisfied and three, three being like maybe. And four and five being very much satisfied. Next slide.
Very scientific.
What did we find out? We found out most of the students are neutral about the food choices in the cafeteria, which is 40%. The other students were evenly split between not being satisfied and satisfied with school lunches. When we asked students why they were bringing lunches from home, rather than eating the, um, food from the cafeteria, we got a variety of answers included. I am vegetarian and I don't like the vegetarian options. I like, like grilled cheese and che, and, or, um, bagel fun lunch. I prefer the Indian food my mother makes me and I get to use all my sauces. I can't eat the cafeteria food because it is not halal. My parents say that home food is healthier and sometimes I don't like the food options, especially the mac and cheese.
We asked students about their lunch choices in the survey. The least favorite was the mac and cheese and the favorite by far was the pizza. The dark blue bar in each graph is, um, what the students like the most. Such as, um, in the third graph, third graph, the pizza.
Oh, yeah.
The pasta and the pancakes. The purple bar represents what, what the stu, what students at the day school really dislike, such as the bagel fun lunch, the macaroni and cheese and the pretzel fun lunch.
Who decides that it's fun?
Oh, there's one more.
Oh, is there one more? I'll go back.
The light, the light blue, it represents that some students can't even eat the lunch because it's not vegetarian. Because we have a lot of vegetarians at our school, such as the hot dogs and the ham and cheeseburgers.
We found that some adults were concerned about how many snacks and desserts were, we were eating. It turns out it's not as bad as you think. Most students are reporting they eat desserts only once or twice a week, which is 63%. The majority of students are reporting they eat snacks only once or twice a week, which is 58%. Next.
Do you think there are enough healthy options, healthy options? Well, 72% of our, of our school thinks there are. Next slide.
Um, we asked the students if they would be interested in trying the foods grown in our school garden. Thirty-one percent said they would love to. And 52% said they would, um, maybe try it depending on the vegetables.
That is kind of a poor question.
We are very concerned about food, food wasted in the cafeteria. Here are some comments from, from the day school students. I noticed some kids playing with their foods, making gross concoctions and then throwing everything away. There's a lot of fruit and milk in the trash. Sometimes kids get the whole lunch and to eat one thing and throw the rest out. The mac and cheese often ends up in the trash.
That's poor mac and cheese.
We know, we know we need to do more education about food waste. We are excited about our no thank you bin created by Mrs. Carpenter. If students don't want foods like, such as apples and bags of raisins, they can put it in the bin and then those foods are, um, they are donated to the Westford Food Pantry. So far, we've donated 1,586 items plus three cases of milk and one large bag of oranges to the Westford Food Pantry. That's a lot of food kept away from the landfill.
That's really great.
All of the foods shown are currently being offered at the Lowell Public Schools. We wanted to know if any day school students were interested in trying any of these options.
Seventy, forty-seven percent of our school wants to try samosas. Fifty-seven percent wants to try dumplings and 34% wants to try chicken or chickpea biryani. Next slide.
These are great choices.
Yeah, now we're hungry.
I was about to say, I'm totally coming to, to the cafeteria.
Twenty-four percent of the students would like to try laklak with rice. Thirty-one percent would like to try Asian chicken salad. And 15% would like to try a rice ball.
These are all, also great choices.
Twenty-five percent of our school would like to try the Moroccan Harissa chicken wrap. Fifty-six percent of our school would like to try the chicken lo mein. And 15% of our school would like to try the beef and broccoli with fried rice.
These are great.
Very adventurous.
I love it.
Thirty-five percent would like to try tacos. Seventeen percent would like to try falafel. And 29% would like to try chana masala.
Next. What makes a kicking taco?
I was gonna say, it's like the fun, fun.
Chicken, chicken bean, it's spicy.
It's spicy.
Thirty percent want, would like to try crispy chicken to vegetarian tofu. All of these foods feature, featured in the, all of the foods featured, foods featured in this part of the survey are currently offered in school lunch menus in the Lowell Public Schools. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much.
I, I have some. So what kind of research did you do to pick these different, um, food items? Like what did you have to do to find out what other schools were, um, serving? And, and, and what made you decide on going with Lowell Public Schools menu versus someone like another school?
So Mrs. Michio, our assistant principal, she was looking through all the school lunches during one student senate meeting. And, um, she looked across Lowell Public Schools and they had very diverse dishes. So we decided to, like, sometimes, like, some of them, we probably added our own, like the samosa and the biryani.
Okay.
Some of them we took from the Lowell Public Schools.
Nice. Thank you for answering my question.
I was gonna say, have you, have you shared any of this information, um, with Ms. Wallace, our, our food services director yet? Have you had a chance to do that?
I do not, we don't think so.
I think the, especially the, the idea of, you know, you've, you've now just asked all the students, all these options about things you'd be interested in trying. And I feel like, you know, they are, the food services, they are kind of always reaching out to see like, what can they add to the menu? So the fact that you've already, you, you have this whole data set, which is just fantastic, um, to share with her. So I think that, that's really interesting. And I would also just say, not to knock mac and cheese, but, I, like, when I was growing up, I wouldn't eat mac and cheese because of the cafeteria of mac and cheese. I do now, though. I eat like homemade mac and cheese now and I love it. But when I was growing up, if it wasn't like out of a box, I wouldn't eat it. Cause it was like, what is that? So mac and cheese, like forever.
I feel like I've had to be in the closet about my not love of mac and cheese and this makes me feel better. Because it's clearly here, like, so many people are like, you don't like it. But apparently there's a lot of other people don't like it too. I want to say I really love that you all asked the question about folks who can't even try some of the options because they have dietary concerns or because there's different things about, um, their life or their culture that they're those. So like when you were saying the question about we're customers and therefore like we should give feedback, I think one of the parts that I might stress to food services is there, there are a lot of customers that they're not getting because they can't eat this food. So there might open up a whole many more customers if they, um, they, if they utilize this information that you've done a really great job collecting.
Thank you.
As a parent who deliberates with his first grade daughter every night about, uh, lunch the next day, I think you guys took it to the next level. And I think that's, should be credited and should be lauded. And also as a principal, I think this idea of a no thank you bin is something I'm going to incorporate in my program. So keep up the hard work.
I will say, on that same note, one of the things that we just have to be mindful of is many of the, the food in the, in the lunch program is coming to us through the universal meals program. So there are very specific, um, limitations as to what, how it can be donated.
Yep.
Right? So that's something to be, um, to, to think about. Like, for example, you could always take an apple and then give that apple away. But the school can't necessarily collect a bunch of apples and then give them away just because if, there's just these regulations involved because the apple was actually paid for to go to you. You know what I mean? And it's supposed to be supporting students. And so if it goes to support somebody else, we have to make sure that ultimately there has to be a way for us to be able to do that. We just have to figure out what is the, what's the best way to do it. I think it's awesome that you're, that you're passionate about it. I think it's fantastic that you've been doing this. I agree, the questions that you're asking, the percentages and the data that you're collecting and you're talking about. I'm sure, you know, there's a bunch of elementary principals in the room right now, along with Dr. Sardella, who are all like, wow, look at, look at these elementary students who are just talking all of this data, 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 data. I think it's fantastic.
I'd love if we get, if there's a possibility of having an actual review of our menus out of this and that maybe at some point in, you know, in the foreseeable future, we actually look at that. Because I, I do think it's really important, we talk about being a district that's inclusive and, and equity. And I think this is another area that we, we can absolutely do that. So thank you for doing all the homework for us.
That's great. Any last comments?
You were wonderfully poised.
You did a great job.
Wonderful, wonderful presentation.
We welcome you to stay, but we also won't be offended if you leave. Next up is Magali.
She is, I'm just moving her over.
We'll switch over to the elementary handbook review. Um, and we have Director of Equity, Curriculum and Instruction, Magali Ronan, joining us remotely. There was a,
Hello, folks.
A document in the handbook, I mean, in the handbook, in the packet, um, highlighting the changes that everybody has access to as well as a version of the document. Yep. Go ahead. Magali, thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. Um, this, this revision or update of the elementary handbook, again, it continues to be a collaboration of everyone's extra eyes. Um, and so I'm grateful for Kathy Muwachi and others for double checking all of our work. In the elementary handbook, you'll find that we did some grammatical updates and general edits, of course. We fixed some broken links and connected, uh, the updated links to the new calendar, of course. We also updated links with the harassment grievance links. Those were going to like the employee handbook as a whole. So we specifically linked the pages for that. And we're trying to be more consistent, uh, also too with our hyperlinks throughout. And so we wanted to be, provide additional information to families about McKinney-Bento. Um, some, some of the title funding links have also been updated. There has been consistent, um, uh, titling of parent caregiver throughout. The link to the parent teacher conferences was also updated. Um, and then some editing of, uh, positions and titles that are moving around. What I do appreciate is that the same, um, the same structure and links we are carrying through, um, into the middle and the high school. So, um, I'm happy to say that these have gotten stronger, um, in the past two years. And, um, I think it's helpful to also have the policy links or the link to the policy air table so that people can actually refer to them when they're just listed by number.
Great. Thank you so much. Did anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Or feedback on the proposed changes?
Title nine, I know there's some regulations, new definitions, grievance. Is that, has that been taken into account too?
Yes, yes. And I, I think what was helpful is that we took care of that in, in the mid-year with our handbooks when that language changed. Um, and those updates have also been included.
Some, some of them, some of them, because we, we know that we're anticipating, we're still waiting for legal, yes, to, because all those, the, the ones that had just changed, Magali, I think is what he's referring to too. Which we'll get those,
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're looking at that for the early summer.
Great.
That then we'll bring back to all of you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions?
I think with our equity audit as well, these handbooks are all going to get a, another set of eyes on them as well, so.
And we have been doing the right, I mean, that was, can you speak to that a little bit?
We, we had a, a small, um, group of staff, um, this year, kind of take a, a look at them with that equity lens. And I suppose the one big difference we came up with was, um, not each, there wasn't a standard translations page at the very front of, of the handbook. Some had them at the front, some didn't have them. So we've done a standardized translations page that has all, I think it's 12 official languages. We, um, we translate for in the district. So each of the handbooks now all have the same and we can update that as and when. But that was probably the biggest thing that came out of it. We tweaked some stuff and here and there, but that was the bigger one. But we also know the equity audit will also, is, is going to have another kind of set of eyes on it. So maybe next year there might be more revisions.
Thank, thank you for reminding us of that. I was able to also cross-track the, the languages for representation.
Yep.
And make sure that our languages are represented in that list. Um, so Amy Bailey also looked at that. I looked at it. So we, we did have like a triangulation. And it's true that if we get new languages coming in, that that would have to be updated as well.
Thank you. The only feedback I had when I looked it through, I'd sent, already sent a couple minor things. Like there was some ghosts of half-day kindergarten that I was like, get that out of there.
Yeah, those were helpful. Those were certainly helpful, Valerie. And then I think there was like a time thing that, um, like the schedule for the PM and AM sessions were also clarified.
Yep. There's a page that lists our committee names.
Yes.
And I was thinking it might make sense to add our email.
Oh, yeah.
On there.
Absolutely.
That, that, so that people can see that and find a way, like it's, it's right after a page of like district contacts. And it just makes sense.
Just the regular school committee one, yeah.
Yeah, that's the broad one. And then the other thought I had was,
Oh, I'm sorry if that was overlooked.
That's okay. And the other thought I had was, does it make sense to add a page of the new graphic STIP in there?
Could be a nice, good idea.
Good, okay, great. All right, so.
Was that a yes?
Oh, yes.
Yes, yes, I think there was.
Okay, cause that, that's a really pretty graphic. I, 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 I think that one is nice too.
Yeah, great. So in the past, we have done two meetings for votes. These are really housekeeping changes. Last year, remember, there was like a, like a substant, substantial discipline change. This seems really more like a lot of housekeeping. I'd be comfortable voting tonight, but I'm looking for the will of the committee.
I, I think we should vote. There's nothing that I'm flagging for me. I mean, I feel like Ming Shan and Chris should do your last handbook.
We approve the elementary handbook for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Great, secret. Oh, fill in a second. Okay, any last? Nope, all in favor? Thank you so much. Thank you, Magali.
Hi, Magali.
Thanks, Magali.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Two.
Ahead of schedule, we will move on to the elementary school improvement plans. You guys have this choreographed K to two and then three to five or all together or? Okay, great.
Do you want me to pull up like a sample one or anything now? Okay, just check.
We're going to talk a little bit about kind of our progress and where we, the progress we've made this past year and then where we want to go. So I'm going to talk about goal one. And so really for our, for that goal, we've been working through the anti-bias building blocks program. You know, Miller, we had a book study and it's been a great tool. We found a lot of great activities, especially for the beginning of the year to build that sense of classroom. It is one book and so we're using it across all grade levels. So it's a great reference. And I, you know, our book study have pulled out some great activities to kind of use as a resource, but some can't be used year after year. So we really, as we move forward, we want to shift that to a building-based DEI team. We started that this year from the district DEI team. I mean, really, really start to build that. This year has been great. We've identified some areas of things that like we want to work on and some goals we have and some tasks. So we really want to, moving in the next direction, we want to, in the next SIP, we want to really work on that. We had successful neurodiversity weeks in all of our buildings that were, were great. That looked like community meetings and activities. And the kids always love like more famous people that are neurodiverse. That seems to be one of their favorites. So we really kind of spread that. We also, Down Syndrome, like Awareness Day fell on that. So we wear mismatched socks for that, but we also talked about how, you know, differences are cool and all of that. So we really feel like over the past few years, we've adopted that. So we don't need it in our school improvement plan anymore. It's just going to be part of our natural piece. So you won't see it, you know, in our next school improvement plan, but we're, we're still going to celebrate it and recognize that. As far as UDL piece, our leadership team has continued to work through that, that training. And so kind of in a train the trainer model. So as we go through, we really, we have two big pieces that we want to really put it to use. And that would be through our MTSS or IST process, really kind of looking at through that lens. And then also we're adopting at the pre-K or the K to two level, the new EL curriculum. So as we're implementing and teachers are rolling that out, we want to look at it through that lens and see how we can adapt and, and model that. Earth Day activities, oh, so the climate roadmap really just came to fruition for a lot of us through Earth Day activities because that's at the K, pre-K to two level, that's definitely developmentally appropriate. And it's, was a great kind of anchor point for that. So we'll can, you know, kind of continue through those Earth Day pieces, but we don't have a direct goal kind of moving forward in our school improvement plan. And then as we're moving forward, our goal is to improve curriculum implementation and assessment system so that every child continues to feel accepted, respected and valued through the lens of diversity, equity and inclusion. So you'll see that we're, the equity audit's still in there because we're going to move forward with those recommendations. I talked about the MTSS process and the EL curriculum for UDL. Continue to grow our school-based equity teams and then also the new IEP with fidelity. So that's really where we are with goal one.
So handing off to me for, for goal two tonight, I'd like to just give you a, a quick and brief progress update relative to that. I won't spend too much time on the ELA curriculum. You've been hearing that now for the last two years. It's really important and we do have that embedded into next year's plan because there's, there are other really important components that we're still working on. However, I will, or I'd like to give a shout out to Erin Hogan, who is our three to five ELA coordinator. I'd like to give a huge shout out to Julie Kelly or Dr. Kelly, who is our STEM coordinator for K to two. And also our ELA leads who have played a gigantic role in helping to keep all of that curriculum professional development going this year and going really, really strong so that our teachers not only were able to implement UFLY with fidelity and learn it and learn it quickly and do it well, but also have some really good rich discussions around that. And then also preparing ahead of time already some EL comprehension PD as well. And I think teachers have really appreciated knowing ahead of time what they're going to be getting into next year. And then that's where we'll spend the bulk of our, our goal next year. So with that being said, poor math hasn't really received much update over the last couple of years. And no, Dr. Kelly did not pay me off to say that. I do want to talk a little bit about those, some really nice things that have, that have changed as a result of her continued work. And that is the fact that we really have expanded the use of our I Ready mid-year data to make sure that we're not just focusing on the bottom 25% of each grade level and where we might put tier two and three services. And so we took a, a closer look and we, we realized that there might be children that are in grade two that are requiring more support right now based on the mid-year DIBELS data. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to make those changes, whether it be a grade level or even a skill level. One example, we went ahead and we realized this was more the beginning of the year data, but first grade was really lacking in counting skills, even despite all the work that was being done in kindergarten. So therefore we front loaded our services and we also provided a lot of inclusion support or tier one support, if you will, so that we could be able to target that skill, give teachers a lot of activities to be able to address that and then move on, you know, from there. And then in terms of how it's impacted our interventions as, you know, as I mentioned it, you know, we're either looking at grade level or skill. And then one really cool thing that took place was some training for the administrators. We were able to take a closer look at not just where, whether or not students are meeting the target, but also looking at their growth rate. Is their growth rate typical based on the national norm? Or is it substantial or, or ambitious? And we know that especially for those children that are performing below grade level, in order for them to meet benchmark, we need them to make ambitious growth. And if, if we want that occur, to occur, how is that going to happen? And so we ended up talking a little bit about the implementation of MyPath, which is a part of I Ready. And now teachers are really implementing I Ready with their children as much as possible. We look to have them do it at least two times a week for 30 minutes. And then for some children, they're doing it a little bit more. And so some may wonder whether or not this software is different from the, the curriculum and our kids doing different things. In some cases they are, they're working on skills where they're weak. But in other cases, kids are, have these aha moments where they say, hey, I just talked about that on MyPath and I just did that. And they see that connection between everyday math. So I think those are some important things that have been accomplished this year with math, which as I said, seems to have taken not really truly the backseat, but maybe not the limelight. How about that? And then if you could just pick up that second, move that packet all the way up there. Perfect. And then in terms of goal two, reworded similar to goal one. And hopefully you'll just see the change in the word emphasis, but I am going to read it aloud. To improve curriculum implementation and assessment systems so that every child continues to access high-quality instruction. We know that we've been talking about curriculum instruction, excuse me, implementation, which is a big deal and does take quite a long time. But we also know that we have to review it too as we continue to implement it to find out where those weaknesses might lie and how we might address it. No curriculum is a one-size-fits-all and we have recognized that there are going to be areas where there's, you know, weakness that have to be addressed. So that was why we really changed the focus of goal two, to look at it more holistically than just the implementation of, of curriculum. And making sure that we all, that we continue to reach the needs of all students. So things that will either continue and/or implement for new for next year are the EL PD. As I mentioned, that's going to be a really big jump for, for teachers, even though they've been exposed to it this year. My grade two teachers happened to implement it all this year and it took a lot of teamwork to get it done and done the way that it felt good. Felt good for the kids, felt good for them. And they're passing on that knowledge next year to teachers. So we're looking forward to that work. And then finally, I just want to talk about the fact that our math task teams are going to be up and running, have been, and that this year, you know, they tackled one area the other day that they identified as an area of weakness. Do you want to guess what it is? Word problems. Not just solving them and solving them correctly, but making sure that kids really truly understand how they solved it. You know, and being able to explain the process other than I just did it, which is really hard at the K to two literal, pre-K to two literal level, but an important skill set nonetheless. And then again, just curriculum, look through that curriculum analysis with everyday math. And so that's all I have for, for goal two.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to talk to you about goal number three. And this goal really focuses on the social emotional wellbeing of our students. And we know as educators that social emotional needs to be a strong focus, right? So we are continuing to think about ways that we can remove things from the students and the staff and families. We this year successfully had the one conference and then we offered the optional conference. That was a huge step in a good direction, I think, for a lot of people. The one, the other initiative that we're proud of is the implementation of the Spirit incentive plans. That's our universal tier one support that we're offering to all our students. It looks different in each building and now now that we have Spirit stars, we're really focusing on the different core values. How can, not only do we teach it, but then praise them for that exemplar behavior in that area? And the hope really is that when they're young, they are getting this early and often and then they don't need that extrinsic motivator anymore. They do it because they believe it's the right thing to do. So we've had a lot of success with that. We're continuing with our community meetings. I obviously took that over for the first time this year and I enjoyed that piece of it so much. I was looking forward to it. And each month we get to review a different core value. So of course that will continue to embed that in our year next year. Goal number three, we're shifting a little bit moving forward. Where we want to maintain a healthy and supportive school environment that meets the social and emotional and health and wellness needs of our youngest learners through the direct teaching of social, emotional and physical wellbeing. So in order to do this, we are going to work collaboratively, K to five, the different schools to develop consistency in the delivery of the lessons within the five competencies. And those five SEL competencies are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and then responsible decision-making. So our aim is really to support students to develop these healthy identities, right? To create thriving schools where our students contribute positively to our overall safety and health of the Westford community. Once there are consistent objectives and lessons related to those five core competencies that I just spoke about, we will know that we've reached that because our school's guidance staff will help to create objectives that are clear and consistent across the five schools. Six schools, not five schools. Five competencies, six schools.
Come on Nina, catch up.
I'm new here.
I'm five other.
Yes. Does anyone have questions?
Thank you. Yeah, open up your questions.
I just really like the uniformity, I think, we're getting across the SIPs, the STIP, the superintendent evaluation, like I just really love that format. I think it's, you can really see that strong, those strong threads coming through. And I hope even it kind of feels easier for you rather than writing lots of narrative and stuff that it's just more focused and.
And our goal next year will be one document.
Yeah.
Not two.
Yeah, yeah.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
You did a great job with that. And I kind of had shared with Valerie, like you were already in the process of creating your school improvement plans with your SACs. And so then I was like, hey, look at this format, which I, the feedback that I heard from you is that you also like that update format. But then to try to bring them together into one document.
Midway through.
It's hard.
We'll look at that early on and see if we can figure out ways to streamline that.
And, and I think as that format grows, like one thing I was reflecting on was when Dr. Chu gives us an update on the whole district STIP and the progress and then the, like action plans for looking forward. We also have his specific goals alongside that, that have like very specific evidence, success criteria. So one thing I don't want to lose in as this evolves is a little bit more of that specificity and like success criterias with it too. Some of them did feel a little vague, but I know that you're working within the both documents and I saw some more concrete in the old format. So like I guess, I guess I just don't want to lose that as we go towards, forward with the new format. That's all. Any other reactions, feedback, questions? That's how good it was. Thank you so much. Well, we can vote on them all together.
Yeah.
And welcome to our three to five principals.
One of the best parts of our school improvement plans that we dovetail off, the K to two, pre-K to two. And it's really, you'll see that they're very much aligned this year that we're all going to be able to do a lot of team building and focusing on common goals that can make our pre-K to five schools better.
So I'll start with an update on goal number one, which is all about diversity, equity and inclusion. And of course, we have some commonalities because we collaborated on this, but there are some school-specific things that are happening. So I invite my colleagues to include anything that I may miss in the, and certainly in the update. But I'll start with participating in and executing recommendations of the district equity audit. So that really is happening in full force this year. So we don't really have any update on that except for the fact that we all have our own diversity and equity committees at the school and we're looking very much forward to participating in the equity audit as it moves forward. But it's definitely addressed in goal number one, which I will be talking about after I give you the update. The second one was about making sure that we have opportunities and materials to increase the understanding of culturally responsible instructional practices. So this is everything from the instructional practices in the classroom, which are definitely addressed in a new EL curriculum and also in our libraries, both in the classroom libraries and the school libraries. And so at the day school, we've implemented the anti-bias building blocks curriculum, both in the classroom and also during our all, all-school meetings. And we do have a new library wishlist that includes many new titles to expand the Windows and Mirror book representations. And I believe at the other schools, you've also devoted funds and monies to purchasing new materials for the classroom as well.
Absolutely. At Chris, we did give some money from our donations to the library to increase some of the spirit books that we've been using for the lessons so that sometimes I steal the books that they use. We, we wanted, we made a list that's diversified, like we won't double dip on the use of same books so we have a more diverse lesson base. We also use, same as Chris, the anti-bias building blocks book as a book study this year. We're on year two. And what we did was we aligned the lessons from our EL curriculum, our new literacy curriculum, with some of the lessons that are within the anti-bias building blocks book. So that there's one that they, they create norms several times in the EL lessons. And there's just a wonderful lesson that's pre-K to two lesson and a three to five lesson on creating norms and being comfortable talking about difficult topics in your classroom. Within the EL curriculum, there have been challenging topics that come up about race, cultures, religion, differences, inclusion and diversity. So that create that one great norm set for speaking in your classroom every day, not just for your EL lesson. So within that we kind of, so there's, we have grade three, four and five represented on the committee and our music teacher then took music, our strings teacher, took her part and she aligned different cultural music to, we did unit module one, units one through three. So unit, yeah, that's, and they, she aligned the music. So unit, yeah, that's, and they, she aligned the music that they could use to the lessons, like, for Esperanza Rising, she used some Mexican Revolution music and some drumming. And then for the third grade, they did Schools Around the World, and she used music for that piece. And in fourth grade, she tied it into the Harlem Renaissance with the poetry units. So we, we kind of took the, and we will share this out, I will share this out with my colleagues, that they can use those lessons to intertwine with EL next year moving forward.
And again, I just want to give a shout out as pre-K through two teachers, to Erin Hogan, our three through five literacy specialist. I don't know how she found the money, but she allocated some funds for all the teachers to get a box of, of really awesome, culturally responsive texts for, that follows the EL program. All of a sudden, they showed up on their stages, and it's, it's great. So shout out to her for, for getting that to us.
In our school improvement plan for this school year, we have embedded the annual celebration of the neurodiversity week. And again, a shout out to collaboration, and so grateful to Sharon Cannelli for providing the resource for our all-school meeting. You had done it for each grade level. We combined it for one presentation, but it worked out beautifully. And I know that the children were having conversations about neurodiverse people and the fact that they, in fact, believed to be neurodiverse as well, and they were proud of that. And we know that those conversations continued after the meeting. And at the day school, we also highlighted this information in our school-wide announcements that happened during the celebration week. And I know you had highlighted something about posters with...
Oh, we hung up some of the posters that we have, that had been shared through the website for Neurodiversity Week. And then we had little snippets, they almost look like highlights from when, I don't know if you guys remember Highlights when you were a kid. They had, like, the little boxes and the steps, so the kids would go around and they read the little boxes on different neurodiverse individuals that had become, they'd show that even though you learn in a different manner, you can still be very successful. So we had different quotes, and then we had different, like, jobs, like astronauts and game creators. Like, Pokemon was big, so keep their interest of what they liked. So then they really focused in on that around the school.
And we did a little, something different at Abbott this year. Melissa Richard, our assistant principal, thought of the idea to bring families into our community meeting. So she sent home the opportunity for parents to make up their own presentation, and we had parents make up their own presentation involving their families, and we were able to present it to our whole school community, which was great.
Right, so last year, our goal was increasing knowledge. And this year, it's more about improving that curriculum implementation and assessment systems. And so really getting into the need of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we still have participating in the district equity audit on it for that reason. And we'll be looking specifically at resource allocation, so this can include everything, such as the hiring practices of the Westford Public Schools. We already had a very successful committee looking at hiring practices and specifically looking at that question of whether the workforce aligns with the demographics that we have. And you remember from the Student Senate presentation that our school is becoming much more diverse, and we want to make sure that we're thinking about opening up the hiring practices to attract more diverse candidates. But this also means access to academic and social emotional learning supports for all students. Also looking at the educational climate, meaning the relationships that we have with families and the engagement among all of the diverse families within our school community. And then looking to, and this perhaps is more at the high school level, because I feel like we've dealt with this in some part at the elementary, but the student classification and achievement, as you know. We've done away with some time ago, having advanced math placement classes at the elementary level, and we're much more inclusive. And so in looking at things like that and making sure that all children have access to robust curriculum. So next up was providing materials to increase, again, with the culturally responsible and instructive practices. So we're continuing to do that through a school-based equity committee. Looking again at the Anti-Defamation League curriculum, diverse books that we have, promoting book studies, making sure that the initiatives that we have are in line with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then the last bit on goal number one was making sure that we implement the new IEP with fidelity. And already, we've had very robust professional development opportunities. Gerard Coughlin has certainly talked to the student support staff, and I know that they're very much invested in making sure that that rolls out successfully.
With PD tomorrow.
Yes. All right, so goal number two was about improving math and language arts proficiency. And of course, we have had a very successful launch of our EL literacy curriculum with great professional development opportunities that were provided by, I think the organization's called Better Lesson?
Yep, Better Learning.
Better Learning, thank you. So they've had that PD, but they've learned that the teachers really like to have time to work and collaborate, so they've increased those opportunities to, to look at the curriculum in full force. And it's really gone well in the classrooms, I think we can all attest, and, and going into the classrooms and seeing how rich the conversations are. And it's incredible, the insights, it feels like, almost like a college-level course when you walk into the, the classroom and see the level of deep thinking that's going on there. So we know that's been successful. And then next, assessing how student progress is communicated to families. And certainly, we have looked carefully at how updates are made in the areas of reading and the skills to reflect those standards as written. And I know in our new school improvement plan, we're going to be looking at that standards-based language to make sure that it matches the curriculum that we now have in place in, in each of the classrooms in grades three through five. And then finally, using Dibbles eight, which is a literacy assessment tool, and iReady, which we use for mathematics, to continue that progress monitoring and data analysis. And at each one of the schools, we really have amazing, a team of literacy specialists and interventionists. So I'll give a shout out to them, to have really great data team meetings with each of the teachers, where they look at that iReady progress data in the lessons and making sure that the professional development is aligned to the data that we have.
Can I jump in here for a minute?
Yes, I hope you do.
And during our curriculum meetings throughout the year, both Erin and Jen Cataldo did present, you know, diving deep data dives into using iReady and then Dibbles. And then Erin also presented EL materials and gave collaboration time, which is a great way for our staff to have those open conversations in a safe place and say, and they would bring work samples of students, like, what would work here? What would, what would help the student? And there are lessons you can pull right from iReady that can be tailored to the student's needs. So if someone needs some fluency practice on multiplication facts, you can take that and take some certain lessons right out of that, that piece, and they can work independently, or they can work in a small group, or they'll work with the teacher directly. So there's been a lot of great professional development done monthly within our buildings through the curriculum coordinators.
And I think we're just getting a little bit more familiar with iReady. iReady offers so much that we live in, understand, we just need a more time to really go, really dive deep into it. And we have more time in the next couple of years, we can really utilize a little bit more than we're using now.
Yeah, in our new school improvement plan, we're continuing that implementation, obviously, of the EL curriculum. This next year will be year number two, and we're going to be focusing specifically on UDL principals, making sure that the curriculum truly is accessible to all of our learners, looking at effective implementation with our special education population. And I know there's going to be a professional development opportunity with Learning Ally, and this is an opportunity to make the text accessible to all students. And so there are, there is that text-to-speech option. So to make it successful for students who are having difficulties decoding grade-level text, they'll be able to listen to the text, and then they will be able to still participate in those conversations. Because we find that those students who are having difficulties with decoding are still really great comprehenders. They just need that little extra boost there. And I know that we'll be working on a section of the EL curriculum called the All Block, which is going to be focusing on more foundational skills and phonics and grammar and, and connections to writing. And then the next strategy for goal number two is assessing the effectiveness of how student progress is communicated, and I think I already mentioned, that we'll be looking at the revision of the student standards-based report card. And then finally, using that school-based data, which appeared in last year's school improvement plan, but continues to be important here. And we've already looked at revising our IST process, and we've had a conversation with all of the elementary-level principals. So we'll be certainly looking at that and how that can support students, and again, looking at student growth through our data meetings and conversations with teachers. Okay?
Okay, so moving on to goal three, just a little recap this past year. Goal three was utilizing the Panorama data and lessons. The S-DIP and SPARE lessons will continue to build our capacity for social, emotional learning. And as I believe Nina presented, we're still looking for ways to remove things from the curriculum calendar schedules, maintaining high expectation of standards. So this year, we're working with leadership team. It's hard, it's hard taking anything off the plates, but we're trying. This year, we've, we've given the faculty some staff meetings, some curriculum meeting time to really work on the EL. The EL is basically taking over the three through five. I mean, but if you're going to adopt a program this intense, you need to just focus on that to make it work. And, and it's been beneficial. When teachers say, okay, you're going to have this hour, just go with your team, and we trust you. You know what to work on the EL, so that's worked great. Also, parent conferences this year, they're all done in the afternoons. We took that off the plate, come back at night. And then, as Nina mentioned, in the spring, we offered the optional to come for the, for the second conference, which was great. And we continue, all the schools, you know, six schools continue to work on the spirit, continue to promote that during classroom instruction, during our community meetings. And then also the Panorama surveys, which we've been doing, we're still getting some results there. We had a great professional development, just administrators, looking again, how we can utilize it even more. A lot of things we didn't know before, now hopefully with that new training, we can utilize it a little bit more. Going forward, we're going to change it up a little bit, and this goal three for three through five is the exact same goal as pre-K through two. And that is to maintain healthy and supportive school environment. That means the social, emotional, and wealth, health and wellness of our students. And so again, we're going to continue to look for ways to remove things off of the kids and for staff while maintaining high expectations. So again, we're going to be working on that. We're going to adopt the, the consistency among the five core competencies that Nina mentioned, and that's going to be something a little bit new for us, but I think it's great to have it from pre-K through five all the way up. So when the kids come to us, we can, we can see where we're at, because, I mean, all the competencies, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, all are still needed at the three through five level, definitely. And the last one we're really excited about is we're going to explore opportunities and schedules to add an additional section of wellness, which is PE for each classroom. We started to talk about this at the very end of the school year, just to make sure it can be done, and we think it can be done. We're going to look more into it. Brian Work, our wellness coordinator, is already on top of it, looking at other school districts, how they implement PE twice a week. And especially with the health, well, health and wellness standards changing a little bit, we're going to definitely need some more time. So we're going to look how we can intertwine that into our second PE class a week. And I know the kids will love it as well.
I personally, at home, have one of the biggest PE fans in the district, so I'm going to not give him that update since he'll be moving out to middle school, that he is missing a year of two Ps.
So we'll work on that next year, so hopefully this time next year, we can come forward with our plan for that.
For fall twenty...
Six.
Six. Okay. Awesome.
So we also have an additional goal from part of the strategic district improvement plan with, working with the Westford Climate Roadmap. We made baby steps into that this year, but it's very, it's important for us to recognize how can we sustain our earth systems and give back to the earth and maintain what we have. So in April, we had community meetings focusing on the earth and protecting our environment. What can we do besides with recycling, composting, shutting off your lights, turning off your car? At Chris Foley, we have a garden club, which they do lessons on erosion, planting, and composting. We actually had little composting jars with worms that come dehydrated, and then you add water. And that was my job, and they just popped right up. And so the garden club was teaching their classrooms about composting worms and what the worms do to turn the soil. So we actually have raised beds that we have been planting flowers, and we do vegetables as well. Other schools have gardens, but not garden clubs at this time. And then what's beautiful about the curriculum right now is that the science curriculum and the EL lessons focus on the environments, the earth systems, rainforest, life cycles, living things and structures. So you could go, I was in a fifth-grade classroom observing EL lesson, and they were talking about the rainforest and the impact of the canopy and, and the different things and how the environment and people who strip the forests have that impact. So it's, it's being interwoven, so with the new curriculum of the EL, we're, we're really hitting all the content areas, writing, reading, social studies, science, there's some mathematics in there, too. So moving forward for next year, for three to five, we've, we're continuing with the Westford Climate Sustainability Initiatives. We want to look into making that roadmap kid-friendly. It's, it's a meaty document. I wouldn't hand it off to a child to read. I want to, we have some ideas of contact, like, continue with our looking into composting in a Western, getting involved with bootstrap composting as we move towards our new waste system management. That might be an opportunity, because we were composting at some of our schools, but we weren't able to collaborate anymore with that piece with, it got a little bit too big for our homegrown piece. So that'd be really great, because when you look at talking about the student from day, food waste, they take the apple because they have to, but the biggest thing is they go, they drop in the trash. We're looking at ways we can, like, manage some food waste and teach kids about composting and where we can go with that piece, and maybe use some of it within our own school gardens, too. Also, just having that no idling zones in our school, making sure that parents are aware of that, and just looking at the town as a whole and how can we sustain those long-term goals to help as schools with the impact that we, all of our use of energy and materials have on our local climate and the bigger climate.
And I think that we should also involve the facilities department in this conversation. As you know, the day school is an aging building. But I want to give a shout out to Jeff Goodwin and his facilities department for helping us with the HVAC system there. In the fourth-grade wing, it's either, the temperature's either the surface of the sun or Antarctica. It doesn't really exist between. But they worked really hard to upgrade that HVAC system going classroom by classroom this year. And it's, it's an intense thing to do, to go into each radiator, I have no idea what they're doing. But somehow, it's working, so I just wanted to say thank you for that and staying on top of it.
Thank you very much. Any feedback and questions from the committee?
I just, I just appreciate for all the principals, the way you interweave all the subjects, the health, the SEL. I think you've clearly articulated it, just excited for what these kids are learning, so, thank you.
I'm going to indulge myself for a second. It's my last minute, all right? Like, I just want to, I mean, I'm not going to say anything that I think other people aren't thinking, but just the breadth of what is in the school improvement plan, the, how substantial all of the, the work that's being done is. It's just, I, I think it's amazing. You guys have a lot of balls in the air at your schools. I think it's evident by this, and this is not even a fraction of what's going on in our elementary school. So I hope people appreciate that. I really appreciate the alignment between the schools with the S-DIP, just like we said, for the K to two plans. I think that's something that we haven't, you know, it's been an evolution we haven't seen. So it just strikes me that, I mean, Sharon, you were, you and I might be the only people in the room that were here doing these nine years ago, right? So just the evolution of the school improvement plan since then, it's, it's unbelievable.
I think the best part is now the pre-K to five collaboration on that piece as colleagues. It also makes you, it's easier to attain your goals when you're working as a team and not in the vacuum to make the best impact for our students and our staff.
I remember when you guys had the first, like, shared Google Doc, right? That was the beginning of the collaboration. And I just think, it's amazing. And, and the DEI and the SEL work that's going on in here, you know, you, people will say, oh, that's, that's detracting from the academics or whatever, but no, it's enhancing, right? It's enhancing the kid's connection to the material, and it's enhancing, enhancing, bringing that, the material and the other subject areas to life for them, and them being able to see themselves in the curriculum and how they feel welcome and included in the school. So just, it just blows me away, and I really appreciate it, of you guys and of your staff and curriculum coordinators and paraprofessionals, everybody, there.
Interfessionists.
Thank you. Interfessionists.
I think we all echo well said. I think we all echo well said. Any other?
I just want to say a thank you on the six schools embracing the neurodiversity week. That came from a conversation that happened out of a CPAC meeting for parents and the fact that you've all taken it and run with it. And I've heard how successful it is for my own kiddos coming home. So, you know, I think for the CPAC parents who, just to feel like that, you know, their voices were heard and you've embraced us, it's been awesome.
Thanks.
Yes. I just want to say that it's great to hear all six of you speak. Being a building principal is very, very challenging, a position that I've never held. And everything that I heard you saying tonight truly spoke about being an instructional leader for your building. You were talking about the curriculum, you were talking about the importance of data, talking about the importance of tying it back to the superintendent's goals. And that is just, it is the most important part of your job as being the instructional leader, but it's only a fraction. Because from the moment they're walking through the door, you're eyeballing those students and making sure that socially, emotionally, they're ready to learn. And whether that means scrambling at the last minute, making sure that all classrooms are covered, or that, you know, meetings are taking place, there's just a lot of balls in the air, like somebody else has stated. But I loved hearing the instructional leadership part of the presentation this evening.
I think, oh, sorry, Sean, go ahead.
I've been going kind of off what Courtney was saying, which is that like...
Lean forward into the mic.
Oh, sorry. There's, there's a goal that's not articulated here that Dr. Chu speaks to a lot, right? Which is making our schools a joyful place, making it an exciting place and a welcoming place. And like, and I think that the six of you all hit that out of the park well, right? Like, it starts at the beginning of the day, and it's all of us who've dropped our children off at your schools, it's, thank you for that, right? And it's, it's always exciting to see what's going on in the schools and how you have everything set up and so much thought and detail that goes into it. So we don't get to see you guys here every week, so thank you for that.
I know. These are like my favorite meetings of the year. And it reminds me of my years on SAC. So like, I love, I love SIP plans.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's weird.
I don't know. Some of you see me pop into your SAC meetings. I just love that part of it still.
I will tell you, they were nervous when you first started doing that. And I was like, no, she really just wants to hear what's going on there. They're like, okay.
Yeah. A couple notes I had was, I love the emphasis on the data review meetings. You know, we've sort of along the year have heard about the Title I grants. And so like those, how you're identifying those students, I think, is really helpful, like that you're weaving that in. And, I mean, we really don't know, you know, how, what our supports will look like over the next year and two and beyond that. And so I just am grateful to hear that these robust data review meetings are happening with our talented literacy specialists and curriculum coordinators and interventionists and classroom teachers and all of that working together when we, you know, just to plan a good foundation for what, whatever the support systems look like in the future. One last thought I had, which is not necessarily, but something for us to think about as we plan agendas and next year going forward with the equity audit and things, is how to help champion the work that's going to be happening at those building, building-level equity teams and DEI teams. So just something for us to keep in mind as we go through that audit and make next year's agendas and goals. And then the last thing is just that, that one about removing things off the plate, right? Like, we've all said, there's so much on your plates. I know, and I know there's so much that you would get to, but then the walkie-talkie goes off and everything, or you're covering in a classroom, you know? So I just, we really do appreciate all of, like, the goals are like, you know, the North Star for what you're trying to get done, but we know that there's fires you put out every day, all day long. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All of you.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the K-to-five elementary, pre-K-to-five elementary school improvement plans, please.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any last, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, McMonterey, Chris. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Miss you guys.
Want to be a community member?
Oh, yeah.
When Valerie retires, they will all remember how much she loves being on an SAC.
Poor Chris, we've already signed him up for like six days. He's not even out the door yet.
Speaking of, policy, policy chair.
P six-one-two-three, notification of sex education is before you. To summarize the changes from the original policy that was in place before we started reviewing it, it's, there's some language changes where we borrowed language from the MAS-C model policy. We just liked how they introduced the policy. And then we really just looked at the MGL, Chapter 71, Section 32A, and we really wanted to make sure that we were hitting all the requirements from that. And we've done that. We've included those in there.
Yep.
We postponed from last meeting because there were a couple of things that we still wanted to hear from. We talked to Brian Rourke, the curriculum coordinator for physical education wellness and health. I probably got those in the wrong order. And, and it started because you had alerted us to the notification letter, and we wanted to make sure that we were aligned with, with the notification letter that has been going out to families, or at least we weren't dictating something that was going to tie principal's hands, Brian's hands, in future notification letters. And so we had a good conversation last week. And so the changes from our last meeting to now are, we don't dictate the policy I said before, the principal will send out the notification at the beginning of the year. And A, that's kind of vague. And B, there was a conversation of, well, if the, if the unit is in May, maybe, maybe not the beginning of the year. I mean, Brian actually said he'd like to do it at the beginning of the year and shortly before they do the unit as a reminder to families that this is, this is coming. But we decided as a policy, we don't need to dictate that. We just said that parents will be notified, our parents, caregivers, and legal guardians will be notified in advance of the, of the unit. So that's one thing we changed. One thing that we kept in, but we had a good conversation, was the language on the notification indicated parents should fill out a form to opt their child in, whereas we felt the MGL language was much more about, you need to notify the school in writing if you don't want your child to participate in the, in the curriculum. We felt, as I think as a policy subcommittee, that would include more, have the potential to include more students and was more reflective of what the MGL said. There was agreement from administration and Brian, so I think the future, that will be what we'll see. And then I think lastly, we had talked about, our policy had said that the notification letter had to notify families that they could review the curriculum, you know, they could reach out to the principal, and within reason, the principal would make the curriculum available to review. We took that out, that language out. The policy still says that families have the right to review that because the MGL says that, and they do. But we didn't necessarily say that the notification letter had to say that specifically. Like, the current version has a link to a video overview of the curriculum, which is great. At the bottom, it also says, "If you have any questions, contact Brian Work," which is great. We felt that captured the spirit of what we want to happen. And I think that's it.
That's it.
Submitted for your approval.
Do you have to do a...
Yeah, I would move that we waive the final reading of P six-one-two-three.
Okay.
Or...
Just saying.
We had a schedule.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not.
You did, you did show a bit more, so it's not that short.
It's true, it's a shorter.
That's true.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of waiving the reading? Great. Thank you. Any feedback or questions on the policy or a vote? Policy subcommittee just did such a good job that there's no...
We did take an extra two weeks on it, so...
That's fine.
That's true.
It better be good.
Yeah. Okay.
I would move that we approve P six-one-two-three.
Motion to approve Policy six-one-two-three.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
And we will get the updated version official and airtable, so it'll be on the district website in the morning.
Great. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, a fiscal year 2024, quarter three financial report from Jenny Lynn, Director of School Finance.
Thank you for having me. And tonight, I will provide you fiscal year 24, quarter three financial report. Move to the first slide. As usual, so that's the cover page. And if you can move to the first slide. So as usual, this is the balance summary in the general funds operating budget by individual function call. At the end of third quarter, the encumbered general funds operating operation is $1,765,56. The total percentage use is 97.33%. If you can move to next slide, we are comparing fiscal year 24's data with fiscal year 23's data. By the end of third quarter of last fiscal year, the available budget in general funds operating budget was $2.2 million. The total percentage was 96.51%. So fiscal year 24's quarter three, we had around $472,000 less than last fiscal year. The primary contributor for this difference is the 9,000 function call, special education tuition. As you can see here, last year, quarter three, the total deficit for special education tuition was $56,000. If you move back to the first slide for fiscal year 24's number, the estimated total special education tuition deficit by the end of the fiscal year is $397,390. So we will discuss the further detail about special education in the later slide. So here is a summary and overview for general funds operating budget. So after the summary, I will highlight a couple notable variance in our general funds operating. And the first one is administration. 1,000 administration, you can see there's a 1% difference between these two fiscal year. At the end of the third quarter, the majority of the funds in our compensation reserve had been redistributed to the appropriate state function call for all settled contract. And the retroactive pay for Unit G's professional salary has been processed in the third quarter. So currently, we have a remaining balance of $22,000 in the comp reserve, which can be utilized to cover the other deficit line by the last quarter of the fiscal year. Next slide is 2,000 function call instructional. You can tell here, we have exactly the same percentage for both year, which is 96%. I will emphasize a couple individual function call. We see some big difference between these two years. The first one is 2325. Can you go back to the previous one?
Is this one we saw? Yeah. Yes, right.
So 2325, teacher substitutes. In this chart, for fiscal year 24, we already spent $368,000 for this fiscal year compared to fiscal year 23's actual expenditure, $270,000. The total expenditure this year is 97,000 higher than last fiscal year. This indicates a higher instance of leave of absence for this fiscal year. This expenditure usually fluctuates based on every year's family medical leave or the number of long-term leave of absence. So those expenditure leave of absence can be fully paid, partially paid, or not paid. And so this is an area very hard or very difficult to make a projection. That's why we see a big increase for this fiscal year. So after, after we talk about the teacher subbing cost, let's look into next slide for a combined...
Can I ask a quick question on that one, Jenny? Is, when you, when you call out the long-term leave absences, is that because that's just that line item for long-term substitutes? Or you know from drilling down that, that the overage is, is because of long-term subs absences?
The total increase actually covers the family medical leave, which is relatively shorter term. And also, we have long-term leave of absence for teacher. So this increase in, actually covers both categories.
So do daily substitutes come from a different line item?
No. It's under...
It's all in there? Okay. All right, thank you.
Under 2325.
Okay. Thank you.
But we know that that, the daily sub hasn't, that necessarily hasn't changed.
That's year-over-year constant. Okay. Got it.
So it's the longer term.
It's more than, it's more...
That's what I was wondering.
And which it also, it ends up costing more money as well, too.
Yeah.
So this year, we have more, not many use.
Okay. Is that higher than normal or compared to last year?
Well, I mean, if we look back over a couple of years, I think we'd have, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, because that is one thing Jenny was saying, it's hard. That's something that's almost impossible to predict.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why? Because it's purely based on employees, like a family emergency, medical emergency, or, you know, teachers, they take maternity leave. So there's no way for us to make an exact projection in this area.
Yeah. Okay.
The other challenging part is sometimes when you have staff members who, whose positions can't be filled by a daily sub, we have to bring in contract services or somebody at a much higher rate because you have speech and language, occupational therapy, special education teachers, school psychologists. So when those leaves happen to land on a specialty, it, it becomes a little bit more complex.
Makes sense. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. So this slide is a combined Unit A salary for both fiscal year. So this covers the function call from 2305 to 2800. That includes classroom teacher, teacher specialist, therapist, librarian, guidance counselor, and psychologist. So fiscal year 24's available budget for a combined Unit A professional salary is $812,000 compared to fiscal year 23's available budget at this point, that was $615,000. So we spend less, we still have $200,000 more in a combined Unit A salary. So we always see an inverse relationship between the teacher's professional salary line and the teacher's subbing cost. Because if we spend less on the teacher's professional salary line, of course, we spend more on the teacher's subbing line. So that's the data we have observed from, from here. So that explains why we spend more on teacher's sub line. Next one.
Jenny?
Yes.
And that could be explained by generally by teachers who are taking, what, paid family medical leave or whatever disability insurance that we offer, right? Because we're not paying those individuals' salary, right?
Yes.
And we also have, we do have people who have taken extended, extended leaves without pay.
Okay.
Right? They, they, contractually, they might be able to hold their position, but they aren't receiving the salary.
Right.
So therefore, we'd save money in their salary while we're paying somebody to, to teach their class, right, as well, too.
Yeah. So we are paying the sub to fulfill the responsibility from the teacher.
Okay.
But those are good examples, because there's all these different pieces of it that, that can impact. Because then we also have people who will be taking a leave, and they will be receiving their pay because it might be sick time or, depending on the length of that, it could be everything from a week to six weeks to...
Three months.
Yeah, yeah.
And depending on if the individual has purchased short-term or long-term disability, then that would impact the payout number. Jenny, does your Unit A, does that just capture Unit A, or is there a Unit B that might have been captured within that line as well?
So this one doesn't capture Unit B, just Unit A.
Okay.
That's overall Unit A.
Thank you.
This one, we will discuss about a function call 2451, classroom instructional technology, and 2455 instructional software. Comparing two years, dollar amount, we can see there are more funding, around 89,000 is designated, designated for these two categories. So that means we have a growing reliance on technology in the current curriculum structure. We're spending... We're spending more on the software. Next slide, the function call 2851 psychological service. For fiscal year 24, the estimated total spending is 451,000 compared to fiscal year 23's, 397,000. The expenditure for special education psychological evaluation service were 53,000 higher this fiscal year.
Jenny, is that, that's contracted services out, that's, we don't have an in-house?
Right.
Oh, is that like the cartwheel? Is that because of the cartwheel?
No, that's not, that's not the cartwheel.
Just like three years.
We do most of our three-year evaluations with our school psychologists, but there are times where we can't handle the volume.
Yep.
And this year was a bit of an anomaly in, in that if you subtract three years, we were kind of stuck into that funny little time of COVID. And so there were a lot of, of needs that were.
Yeah, the actual, the numbers of evaluations that hit at the same time because of the timelines being adjusted was significant this year.
And so that will continue to happen.
I was about to say, have we?
So we're going to have this in another three-year wave? Yeah.
And, and some, some students will age out. And, and some, you know, might not be qual, might no longer qualify, so it's hard to predict, but yes, it could be, yeah.
For a little while.
So we are moving to the 3,000 other school choice, uh, school services function call. We have seen a 2% increase for this function call. That's directly related to the 3,300 transportation cost. So fiscal year 24's available budget is about $190,000 less than fiscal year 23. So that's directly related to that $180,000 we received from Apple Fund to support the transportation and fuel escalation costs. Because in this fiscal year, we don't have this one-time fund support, that's why, and we've seen a cost increase. 4,000 operation and maintenance. We also see a 2% increase in 4,000 function call. So we will discuss like a three major category under the 4,000 function call. The first one is custodial services. Look at the first chart and fiscal year 24, the estimated year-to-date expenditure is 2.1, $2.1 million. Compared to fiscal year 23 is $1.9 million. We have approximately 195,000 more will be spent on custodial services in fiscal year 24. So this is attributed to the three major category, which is listed in the second chart below. This is due to our contractual salary increase because we have fewer, fewer custodian substitutes. So we incur higher overtime costs for this fiscal year. The second category under 4,000 function call is 4120 and 4130, heating of the building and utility service. Because last winter, we have a relatively warmer temperature. So the expenditure on the building, heating, and utility cost has decreased by around 110,000. The last category under the 4,000 function call is our maintenance budget, which will cover the function call from 4210 to 4230. Fiscal year 24's total maintenance expenditure is $1.2 million compared to fiscal year 23 is $1.1 million. So we have seen approximately 188,000 more spent on maintenance of wrong, building, equipments, and secu- uh, security. So from these data, we can tell the building maintenance appears to be underfounded or underbudgeted area as we have observed for many years already. So in summary, if we account for all those increase and decrease under the 4,000 function call, so the net impact under the 4,000 operation and maintenance is about 272,000 more than last fiscal year. So facility departments' historical expense overrun remains as a budgetary risk. So we will need to continue, can we manage the facility budget at the same time? So we still need to maintain the building and the appropriate level of health, safety, and instruction. So next one is 9,000 special education tuition. As we previously discussed at the beginning of fiscal year 23, the ending balance for special education tuition was deficit $56,000. For fiscal year 24, the estimated ending balance for out-of-district tuition will be $397,000. So this is almost seven times than higher than last fiscal year. That's directly related to that 14% increase for the special education. So when you look at those line numbers, we already utilize 2.4 million dollars from circuit breaker grant and 820,000 from grant 240 to offset. So this represents the remaining deficit for the fiscal year. Something important to know that from fiscal year 23's operating budget, we prepay 260,000 for the special education tuition. So if we factor that 260 into the total calculation, the estimated deficit for the special education is around 650,000 for this fiscal year. So this number does align with our original projection because that 14% increase. This slide.
Our projections. It's always good when our projections align.
Exactly.
Unless we're under. I'll also take that. Sorry, Jenny.
This slide wrap up the general fund. So next one, let's jump into federal grants. I will discuss about two federal grants. The first one is SO3 funding. We have utilized 189,000 from SO3 funding to support our free four-day kindergarten program. The SO3 funding will be fully expanded by the end of fiscal year 24 for this specific purpose. The second one is grant 274 IEP. The total amount for the grant 274 is $33,000. This grant help us to support $9,000 stipend in total for us to transition from the current IEP software east back to the new IEP software power school. So we can ensure each building has one mentor or trainer for this transition. And the remaining 24 is just for the software transition cost. Next one is our state grants. There's three state grants here. The first one is the NAC playground grant. We have received 100,000 for the playground grant for, in the third quarter of this fiscal year. This funding must be fully utilized before the end of this fiscal year. The remaining 725,000 for this project will be covered by the town CPA bond. So the second one is proficiency-based outcome language grant. The total amount is 17,000. We use this grant to support a collection and the analysis for the data related to proficiency in language other than English. So we can help, we can use this grant to help improve the word language, heritage language, and ELL program. The last one is mass cultural council grant. We received $2,500 from the state to support WA's Asian Club. The last slide is a summary for our revolving account and special revenue fund. For our revolving account, total ending balance by the quarter two was 2.9 million. Fiscal year 24's quarter three, the ending balance is 2.5 million. We are spending those revolving account to help us to offset our general funds operating budget. The second one is regular four-day kindergarten. We have utilized 85,000 from FDK revolving account. So the remaining balance, 147, will be fully expended by the conclusion of fiscal year 25. Building usage revolving, we have seen a healthy growth in this revolving account. As we originally planned it, we're going to use 20,000 to offset the custodian salaries. Especially we have the facility overrun, so we are currently at a target. We already used 14,000 for this purpose. So the remaining balance will be consistent with our original plan. The last one is our school choice. School choice remains strong. Planted total offset from school choice for fiscal year 24 is 441,000. At the end of third quarter, we have used 175,000 so far. So that just wrap up everything for the Q3 financial report. I have presented lots of numbers, so hopefully didn't bore you too much.
This has been a year of numbers, Jenny. Let's just.
Thank you, Jenny. And I just want to remind people who might just be tuning in tonight that you've done this consistently for two years now, where you give us these quarterly updates. And the committee has responded very favorably to it. The questions came up, especially around town meeting, when people are wondering like, who's looking at all of the line items? And not only did you do a thorough review during the budget season, did the FINCOM do a thorough review during the budget season? But you do these quarterly updates as well, too, in these public meetings that people aren't necessarily aware of. I'm actually wondering if Kathy, if we might like grab these specific meetings and put these links on the budget page as well, too, so that people see that this is happening? Because again, I think you're doing phenomenal work and I want people to, outside of this room, to, to know that.
I think that's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
And your explanations are always very clear. I think that you really take the time to go through each item and explain it. You do a really thorough job of illuminating concepts that are very complicated. And that just shows mastery.
Thank you.
And sort of like imagining what questions might exist. Like on top of that, I think, I think you do a great job thinking of, thinking that somebody might see this question and you have the answer ready. And/or if someone asks you a question, I've yet to know you to not be able to give them the answer yet.
Yeah. We're very grateful for you, Jenny.
She's learned all about it. She knows what we're going to ask.
Some questions. Yeah, she always going to ask some questions.
More just a comment, right? Like, I mean, trying to follow along and watching your presentation tonight in particular. And for anyone who's watching along, who's still undecided about tomorrow, you, you know, you pointed out that, look, there's, there's what, a surplus of 200,000 in salaries, right, from unit A? And heating and electrical costs were down because it was a relatively warm winter. And so there's some additional money there. And then you get towards the end of the presentation and just get whacked over the head with special ed tuitions of 397,000, you know? So, I mean, if that, if that doesn't drive it home, it's just, it shows it's, things are tough. And every, every penny matters. And anyone who thinks that the district is just going to quote-unquote find the money and solve its problems for next year, it's, it's not going to happen, so.
Louder for those in the back.
Can I ask one question just on the curriculum software? We've spent more this year than last. I know we were looking at reducing our costs within that whole world of software. So I'm just wondering, is it attributed to anything in speci- like specifically or?
Well, some, some of the costs just increased, right, from the last year to this year.
Yeah.
What we looked at is reducing our costs for FY25.
Yeah.
Based on the, but based on the contracts that we already have for FY24.
For example, we are trying to integrate the IEP software into Power School.
Yeah.
That's some, some kind of consolidation. Because in the past, we pay about $100,000 for the Power School. And now, after we consolidate, consolidate everything and Courtney was able to negotiate it down to $50,000. That's something we are trying to help us to save the costs and buy, you know, combine different module together instead of buying from different vendors.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And the other factor around that is that many of the softwares or the apps were given at a very reduced rate during COVID. And as districts have come to like them and the teachers understand how, you know, helpful it is, then the prices went up. The other thing that hit us by surprise is the, is it the iOS, the operating system? Some of them, as they increased in their software, required a different operating system on ours. And so it was almost just this catch 22, which was unfortunate.
Thank you so much, Jenny. Appreciate it. Anything on the personnel update?
So the last thing that I just want to highlight for you is that we see several separations from the district as well as new hires. Many of the new hires that we're hiring at this time are substitutes. And so at this, you know, college is getting out. And as college students need jobs for the last month of school, we are more than happy to take them and to give them a job for the next month or so. So I would encourage.
Because we need substitutes.
Because we need, because we need substitutes. Because we do need subs still. The other one that I wanted to highlight is Scott Middlemas, Assistant Principal at Robinson School, has been with us for several years now. And as much as it's always a loss to lose an administrator, we have to feel happy when our administrators receive very nice promotions. And so in Scott's case, you know, it's really a tribute to the skills that he has learned here in Westford, working with a variety of principals along the way, really embracing special education when his particular role changed from just being, you know, split between two elementary schools to then being the lead special education liaison for his building. And certainly, you know, the mentorship that he has received along the way, as well as his own vision of this is what I want to do. Not everybody wants to become an administrator, not all APs want to become principals. And that's fine because we need every, you know, a little bit of everybody along the way. But for Scott, he will be missed in Westford. We know that he will be in very good hands because he is landing in Bill Ricker with our Dr. Cleary. And we can't be upset with Dr. Cleary because he is getting a promotion, one that we didn't have available for him here. So we wish them both well.
Yes. Congratulations, and you'll be missed.
Yes.
And a motion to adjourn, please, or delay of meeting. Thank you. And a second?
You're going to second Ming Chen?
Second.
All in favor? Good night.